to stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening, item three, is approval of the agenda.
I would move approval of the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Kaiser Schott and a second by Donovan to approve the agenda as posted. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I would like to take topic 8C off and put it on to the February meeting agenda. We were reviewing it just recently and realized there is another way we could streamline some of the steps that we've established there, and we would like to take it back to Policy Committee and go through that simplification process and bring it back in February.
Okay, so with that change, I would ask Board Member Kaiser Schott and Board Member Donovan if you would like to withdraw your motion for approval and restate a new motion indicating approval of the agenda as amended by Board Member Wyeth.
I certainly will. I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
And I'll second that as men.
All right, again, we have a motion by Board Member Kaiser Schott to approve the agenda as amended, and a second by Board Member Donovan. Is there any further discussion or are there further changes? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. The next item on our agenda then is approval of the December 12th, 2005 Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes and Closed Session Meeting Minutes.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the minutes from December 12th, Regular Board of Education Meeting and the Closed Session Meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Wyeth to approve the December 12th, 2005 Regular Board of Education Minutes and the Closed Session Minutes, and we have a, excuse me, a second by Board Member Crimmens. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. The next item on our agenda is student staff recognitions, and this evening we have one, and I would ask Peggy Shoemaker, our principal at Holton Elementary, to come up and introduce those students' staff.
You walked right past it.
Go back up the aisle, or you can use that one.
I brought a team of people with me who represent a group of educators, parents, and business people that were part of a phenomenal learning experience that we did at Holton during the month of November and December. So first, I'd like to introduce this group to you. We have Bonnie Johnson, and Bonnie is the manager of Darla's in Stillwater, as well as the manager of Darla's in Hudson, and she was our business partner in this learning adventure. We have Joanne Augustine. She is a fifth grade teacher at Holton. This is her third year at Holton. And Annie Bros, who is a Holton parent, she's also on the Junior Achievement Board, and she, thanks to her, brought this incredible experience to us. And Tim Olson, who is also a fifth grade teacher, and Tim is in his second year at Holton. These two teachers really are an example of the fine teachers that we have in the Hudson School District, and so I thank them for being adventurous in doing this project. So I'm going to ask Bonnie first to talk a little bit about the business partnership, and then we'll move on. We do have, for the benefit of the audience as well as board members, we just have some slides that will ongoing be rolling through, so if you don't catch them the first time, they'll continue to cycle through. Part of these are some of the newspaper articles that we did have in the St. Paul Pioneer Press, as well as the Star Observer, and some are just photos that we took. So I'm going to turn it over to Bonnie for just a few moments here.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Johnson. I do manage both locations of Darla's, and working with Holton Elementary was the first time that we have done this at our Hudson location. We started the Darla's at School project about four and a half years ago with Oak Park Elementary in Stillwater, and it started out with just, it was an idea from a fifth grade teacher that approached us about a way to kind of reiterate what the kids were hearing from their teachers and their parents, but just from a fresh voice and how it really affects you in everyday life of things that you learn at school. What it basically comes down to is an eight to 12 week program on teamwork and manners. As you can see from the pictures behind you, it was a little more than chaotic. It takes, you know, you don't really know what you're up against until you turn a restaurant that seats 125 people over to about 30 fifth graders, and it was more than interesting. At one point in the night, you know, anything, you know, when people would say something, I'd be like, they're 10. The staff is 10 right now. But they, they worked really hard. They had a lot of stuff they had to learn. They were in charge of all of their promotions, taking reservations, they had to write their menu, what, choose what they wanted, and then decide how to market it. They had to generate their own customers, and for us, it was really core doing it here because our restaurant in Stillwater, about 80% of our business there is based on tourism. We have five great months out of the year, and the rest is, you know, for right now, we're actually closed except for three days a week. And this is our way as a business to give back to the people that support us all year round. There is a selfish little part in there as well. 70% of my staff are under, you know, 16 years of age, so in about four years, my employee pool will probably triple. So it was a great experience for us, and we really look forward to working with Tim and Joanne again next year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Annie Bros, and I'm a parent of a fifth grader and a second grader and a kindergarten at Holton Elementary. I'm also on the Board for Junior Achievement here in Hudson. I've been a board member for Junior Achievement for the past couple of years, and the philosophy with the Board is to give these children real life experiences, and I believe junior achievement in the classroom goes fairly far in contributing to that. But my idea about Darla's was that this could give the children a real hands-on life experience, and that at fifth grade, kind of a culmination of many years of having junior achievement in the class would be a perfect opportunity for them. Also, given that in sixth grade now, we implement Exchange City, which is just a broad base of what the Darla's program is. Darla's dealing with just a restaurant here in town, and as you, I'm not sure if any of you have been to Exchange City, but that's running an entire community or town for the day. So I thought it'd be a good starting point for the fifth graders. The kids were able to learn firsthand how to deal with money, which is all goals of junior achievement, fiscal responsibility, being part of a community, being part of a team, learning how to work with others in your community, learning how to follow rules. Bonnie's program was pretty much set up for us. There was a little bit of tweaking here and there, but essentially, I want to give you the depth of what these children had to do. They had to start with the interview process. They had to fill out an application. They had to learn to be neat when they fill out the application without scratching out. They had to learn to, how to handle themselves in an interview. Bonnie interviewed all of them to see what position, and if she thought you were better suited for dishwashing than out in front, that's where you ended up, based on your, how your interview skills went. And then there was children that were designated to work the cash register. They not only had to learn different math skills and implement their math skills, which I believe Joanne and Tim can talk about how they implemented into their math curriculum. It was also implemented into art because they made posters and signs and invitations for this evening. So it was just a broad base, and they were able to integrate it into just about every part or aspect of their classroom experience. As far as junior achievement is concerned, we were thrilled with the opportunity to help facilitate this and hope to do this in the future. Bonnie has expressed that she would open it up to another classroom, you know, one in the fall, one in the spring type of situation. I know Holton is pretty committed to doing it in the, in the winter semester, but, you know, other schools can take advantage of this program too, and junior achievement would support anything that they need with respect to that. So I'll turn it over to Joanne. Oh, Tim.
The activities were done in the context of real-life situations, so the students were very motivated to stay focused and learn these skills, and they were, they were hearing the importance of having manners and showing etiquette and meeting requirements, not from their classroom teachers, but from somebody from the community that in the future they might be, you know, working for. So it, it brought in a new sense of, not urgency, but importance into, into some of the things that they were learning. Also, one of the things that I really enjoyed about the, the program was that we had, we broke the students into different committees, and they were, they kind of spearheaded, they kind of ran these committees, and they saw how their individual committee worked, but on the night, they were able to see how all their committee work had come together and, and really turned into a wonderful night for them. And lastly, one of the things, and I hope Joanne, you're not planning to talk about this, but one of the things that we, we did was we, we collected tips, and we had just under $700 in tips, and we donated about $425 of that in both products and money and cash to the Food Shelter in Hudson. So that was another aspect that they're, they're giving back to their community, and the children really, really enjoyed that.
I guess I'd like to start off thanking so many people for supporting us. There are a lot of familiar faces that showed up that night. We had members of the school board, administration, principals, fellow teachers, and of course just people in the community. So thanks for, for being there for us because the kids really enjoyed serving you that night. Whenever you add curriculum to your day, you have to ask yourself how you're going to assess it. And Tim and I kind of went with three criteria. One, does it meet the benchmarks? And as you've heard, it kind of fulfilled our benchmarks for junior achievement, but it also gave the kids time with communication skills, math skills, thinking about things that normally we don't talk about, body language, how your voice sounds, is there a tremor in it? Do you sound timid, or do you sound like you really, really know what you're talking about? And they got to practice that with us in the classroom and then later with you. So thank you. Secondly, we asked ourselves things like, you know, is this appropriate for fifth graders? And this was something we were really concerned about at first because most of us don't go looking for a job until we're in high school. So to go in as fifth graders and have to perform that first night, we kind of thought that maybe we were pushing the envelope just a little bit. Fifth graders don't like to fail. They don't like to be humiliated in front of peers, family, and, you know, strangers. So that was a real concern. But Darla's had such an amazing support for us. They had all their employees there. They had been through this before. They checked our orders. They were there, you know, as a backup, saying, "It's okay, just go on, go ahead and do it. You're doing a great job." And the kids really felt successful. Lastly, we have to ask ourselves, is this providing a great social and life skill experience? And that, you can look at the pictures, those kids are radiant. We had to push them out the door. They wanted to work double shifts. At one point, the restaurant was a sea of red and smiles. So thank you very much.
Okay, I want to again thank the Board and reiterate what Joanne said. Your support for junior achievement is greatly appreciated. Your support is, is affecting classrooms and, and business partnerships, so thank you very much for that. I do want to turn it and ask if there's questions at all about the experience or of the teachers or Bonnie. Turn that over to the Board now.
What kind of after evaluation did the students do for the event? Did they have to do something in the classroom to, to summarize how it went for them?
One thing that we did that morning was that we have, we have something called morning meeting, and it was kind of a debriefing and likes, dislikes, and their takes on it. And also, we did journal writing, and one of the fun things that we did was talk about how we were going to spend, what, how we were going to donate that money, what, what, what projects were they interested in. So, and then Joanne and I got to go to Cub and spend $250 on food, which was kind of fun. Well.
That was one of the greatest, as a principal, one of the greatest benefits that I saw from the program is that there was real-life decision-making and problem-solving going on, and that is really important for kids to be able to solve real-life problems and make real-life decisions, and this was really a good opportunity for them.
Madam Chair, just one question. Peggy, just curious feedback from parents, positive, negative?
The parents were absolutely stunned, impressed. I probably can't find the, the adjectives for it. Some of the most powerful stories came from those students that were not always successful with academic learning, and the, the self-esteem booster that that night caused, the ability for the teachers to tie that in when they're talking with, with students about perseverance and that sort of thing was, was really powerful. But the parents were very, were absolutely bursting their buttons, really, about their children and about our school and about the teachers.
Thank you.
I just, one of the things, having been there, and I did, I really enjoyed myself, although dinner took a little longer than I had expected to arrive. But one of the things that struck me as I was waiting for my dinner and seeing all the sea of faces and the energy that was there, and clearly all the preparation that had gone into it, because you could really tell that the students had worked, they were really aware and alert and attentive, and they were doing their math, was that this is an example of the kind of partnership that really strengthens a community, and to have businesses so willing to step up, and Darla's is not the only one, it's one of many that feel very strongly about committing to our schools, and for the school also to be saying, "Let's, what can we do to keep strengthening these kinds of partnerships?" To me, the, sitting there waiting for my dinner, it had to be one of the, the, a real highlight in my career as a board member, to be able to see that this is the kind of partnership we can do.
Any other board members or administration?
Yeah. Who's there to? I, I wore a vanilla shake on my back. It was, it was, it was, it was just a blast. It was just a blast. Those kids were so wanting to be successful, and they were so enthused, and they took it so seriously. I mean, they really did. It wasn't that they were just there because it was fun and exciting, that there was a lot of energy there, but they really took it so seriously, and I was just really, I was really impressed. I wondered, what would students do the same if they did it again, and what, if, if they did express it, would they do differently?
We sat down and talked about what they would do the same, and basically, they all said that they would like to redo fifth grade and do it exactly the same. It was very difficult to get them to say anything negative. The next day, we had a room full of very sleepy children. They were exhausted from putting in a full day at school and then, you know, a full night on the job, but they were so happy. I think from our standpoint, we would, might drag it out a little bit longer. We kind of wanted to get it done before the holiday. We think it would be better maybe to do it different time of the year. We're looking at, I think, January and February, just because we did feel that we were running into some conflicts with people having other commitments, you know, concerts, holiday parties, that kind of thing. I think if we spread it out a little bit longer, they'd have a little bit longer to study, a little bit more hands-on practice, but all in all, they thought they were awesome, and I guess I, I'm sorry about the milkshake, but I still agree, they were wonderful.
Well, my first waitressing experience, I did the same thing, so 20 years later, I guess I've got it coming, huh? I thought they were excellent too.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you. Thank you for, again, for the collaboration with the school district in giving the students the opportunity to experience what it's like to be on the job, and I'm sure all that practical experience will help them in the future, and it's obviously helped them in the classroom, so thank you. With that, we will move on to item six, reports, and Mr. Fett, would you introduce those, please?
Yes, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce Jim Stasco. He's our supervisor of facilities and grounds. As everybody in the audience is probably doing, they're watching their energy cost, and we at the district are trying to do the same thing, and Jim's going to tell you a few of the things that we are doing and would like to do yet, and along with Jim Stasco is Lee Schwab's from Energy Focus. He is, also works for Excel Energy, and Jim will introduce him and, and as we go through this. You're up, Jim.
Actually, Lee works for Focus on Energy, which is a group that works with a lot of school districts which are looking for ways to save and conserve energy. One of the first things I wanted to talk about, about, was, Arnie alluded to energy costs going up. I'm sure everybody noticed on their Excel bills when they opened them up this month that it's probably a little bit higher than the same period was last year. Mine was significantly higher, I really noticed it. In the district, we've, we've seen a 47.5% increase in our per firm pricing since August, and that was as of our November billing period. So from August to November, our price per firm for natural gas has gone up 47 and a half percent. That's a significant increase. Our costs for energy this year will be higher. We need to be prepared for that. You just don't, there aren't enough conservation measures in the world to avoid increase in costs when you, when you look at 47 and a half percent increases over a two-month period in your gas, in your gas costs per firm. We are doing things though, to try to help soften that blow a bit. One of the things the district does is we buy our gas from Excel on an interruptible service. What that is, is when demand gets very, very high, when it's extremely cold out, I'll get a call, whenever it might be, middle of the night, middle of the day, and Excel will tell us to get off the gas. So then we have to switch to oil. So we have the capability of doing that at six out of our seven schools. The high school and middle school, EP Rock, Willow River, Hudson Prairie, and Holton are all capable of burning oil as a backup source of fuel. North Hudson's the only one that we don't have that service at, and that saves us a lot of money. That's, our, our cost per firm rate to be on interruptible service is significantly lower than to be on a firm gas service. We continue to tune our, our heating plants annually, tune and clean them. We, we do an annual tune-up on the, the burners for all our boilers, and we clean them manually, and that just helps to have those things running as efficiently as they can. Tuning them is probably the biggest thing. That can really significantly impact the efficiency that your boilers are running at. We all, we've also developed and implemented a pretty comprehensive preventative maintenance program over the last two years, where we are going in on a very regular basis and dealing with all the preventative maintenance measures for all our air handling systems, checking damper operations, make sure the linkages are properly hooked up, cleaning, filter changing, coil cleaning. Coil cleaning's a real big energy saver. Dirty coils aren't efficient. So we've been on that with our preventive maintenance program that we put in place about two years ago. One of the other things that we've done is during all our recent roofing projects, we've done a fair amount of re-roofing in the district over the course of the last five years, and everywhere we've put new roofs on, we've increased our insulation values over, we've over-doubled them in a lot of areas, so that's kind of a side benefit of the roofing projects. We really are increasing the insulation on all our buildings too. One of the other things we've done very recently here is we've adopted a kind of a sub-70 program, where we've lowered all our set points in our buildings below 70 degrees. Most of them are at 69. People like it, you know, as high as you can get, but we've really, we've pushed towards getting everything under 70, and that's about 90% implemented right now. So those are the things we're doing on the gas side of energy costs. Then there's the electrical side of energy costs. Now, the, the price increases haven't affected us as significantly on our electrical costs yet. Electrical cost increases are lagging behind gas increases by about four to six months, but they're coming. We'll be hit by those too. A very interesting statistic I, I learned when I was at the BOC course that Focus on Energy put on with Excel, is that 60% of electrical costs in K through 12 school buildings are spent on lighting. So lighting by far is our biggest cost when it comes to electrical costs. So some of the things that the district have done to, the district's done over the last few years to battle rising electrical costs, is we've done a lot of lighting conversions. When we remodeled Willow River, that entire building had a complete lighting, lighting conversion over to more efficient T8 and in some places, T5 lighting. T8 is pretty much the industry standard now for efficiency. T5 is kind of the next generation. Little spendy, a little harder to maintain, but a little more efficient. EP Rock, we did all the classrooms and hallways at EP Rock over the course of the last two years. All the lights that have been replaced, they're all T8 lighting now. The high school, all the hallways on the west side of the campus, we replaced the lights there in conjunction with a ceiling project, and both gymnasiums, we did a lighting retrofit over the course of the last summer, and with that particular project, we also installed occupancy sensors, and the savings and the payback on that project were really phenomenal. And then the quality of lighting also went up there dramatically. I don't know if anybody's been to games recently, but I feel the lighting in both gymnasiums, particularly the west one, has really improved dramatically. And then pretty much any other areas that have been remodeled in about the last 10 years have all had lighting conversions done in them. Another thing that we've done is variable frequency drives have been installed in, in a lot of the large motors, a lot of larger air handling motors. Variable frequency drives allow those motors to run at a lower RPM, lower frequency, and use less energy when the load is not such that it needs, that it's calling for them to run it at full speed, and they, the payback on those is also really very attractive. And again, coil cleaning, all the air conditioning and refrigeration equipment is part of the preventive maintenance program, is being cleaned twice a year now, and that just promotes efficient operation, in particular in the air conditioning and refrigeration equipment. Ventilation, ventilation and heating and cooling operations are- Ventilation and heating and cooling operations are set back at night when the buildings aren't occupied. So rather than being, trying to maintain 69 degrees as we do during the day and when the buildings are occupied, we let them to fall back to around 60 degrees. And then there's a morning warm-up period that they go through before people show up in the buildings. The district's currently also working with Focus on Energy to identify more potential energy conservation measures, some of which have very attractive monetary incentives for us to get done. One other thing that the district is working with Focus on Energy with is a benchmarking survey. Basically, the benchmarking survey is, as I understand it, is just going to show us where we are compared to other similar-sized and similar-aged schools within Wisconsin. Excel sent us out a little report on averages of school buildings throughout the US and what they spend per square foot on energy. The Focus on Energy benchmarking survey is going to be much more applicable for us in Wisconsin. It's going to stack us up against other schools in Wisconsin, similar climates, similar-aged buildings, rather than, you know, nationwide, you know, they're taking buildings in Texas and Arizona and, you know, completely different climates. So the average gets a little skewed. So with that, I'm going to introduce Lee Schwabz from Focus on Energy and let him speak a little bit more about who Focus is, what they do, things they've done with us over the last couple of years, and where we're kind of headed in the future with energy conservation in the district.
Thank you, Jim. And thank you very much for the opportunity to let me speak tonight regarding the partnership between the school district of Hudson and Focus on Energy. I thought I'd touch a little bit on myself, my background, just because I'll be the face that keeps showing up here. Talk a little bit about Focus on Energy itself, that you understand what the organization is, and maybe just talk a little bit more about some of the programs and a little bit more of what Jim was talking about. I retired seven years ago from NSP, Northern State Park Company, now known as Excel. 14 of the 36 years were spent here in Hudson. And you, Arnie, way back when, we both looked a little bit younger than we do today. And three of my children were in school here. My daughter graduated from here, and the boys both graduated Monomony, where the company transferred me to. I, my background's engineering. I used to do a lot of design work for the company. And one of the jobs I designed was to service in, to what was the new high school at that time. And I'm really impressed with this building because I can remember going to meetings, I believe it was called the Leo Torment, wasn't it, down in Willow River building now? So, and part of what I did was work with, while I was here, too, I worked with our industrial accounts from Rice Lake down to Hager City on a lot of different energy projects. A lot of what I did was conservation work. Two years ago, I was asked if I'd be interested to work part-time for Focus, and it was a good opportunity, and I thought it'd be kind of fun and keep the, keep the brain from getting rusty, so here I am. As far as what Focus and Energy is, it was created, the concept came up in 1998 when Tommy Thompson wanted his world to be a little bit bigger. And the utilities were looking for a little bit more latitude in the unregulated part of business. So they cut a deal. And the dollars that supported what the utilities, or in this case, NSP, was doing as far as dollars spent to have people such as I go and work with customers was part of the rate base. So the customers are paying for it. That, basically, the same amount of money then went down to the department administration down in Mass. And there, it now sits there. If you look on your utility bill, if you're an Excel customer, down the bottom, there's a non-taxable amount that comes out every month. And the residents are somewhere around 75, 85 cents. And that goes down to Mass to support these programs. An average middle school in Wisconsin probably pays somewhere around $90 a month to support this program. And I feel it's real important that I get out and work with Jim on some of these things, that we can find ways that you get some of your dollars invested in the program back to the school district. When this happened, the department administration asked the CISA's in the state if they would do the work with the school districts that had been being done by the utility people. And each CISA had hired one person to work on, with the school districts within that CISA on energy conservation. Some were enthusiastic about them, some of them weren't. And it kind of was starting to kind of come apart. So the CISA 10 really liked doing it. So CISA 10 picked up the program for the whole state of Wisconsin. So it's run all CISA in Chippewa Falls. We have people in Mass, Milwaukee, Green Bay, Stevens Point, Ashland. And there's about eight of us working out of Chippewa Falls on this project. In addition to schools, we also now do government and also, it started out originally just public schools, but now we're also doing the private schools and government. And I've been, I've done some work here with St. Patrick's, and right now I'm doing some work with the city of Hudson. So a lot of reasons to come back to what was my old hometown for a while. Jim gave me a call this summer about the EP Rock lighting project. And hadn't been working with the district until then. And I really welcomed the opportunity to come over here and work with Jim. And we, this year, we worked on that project, and we worked on the lighting, the two gyms here in the school. And I thought I'd go through, I gave you the information here. And if you'd open it up, what I'm going to be talking about first is, on the right-hand side, the first page, it talks about what we can do. Typically, what you start out on is an energy audit, and actually walk through a school building with somebody from the buildings and ground staff looking at things. Now, I started here, Jim Cohen, I just came specifically over, started working at EP Rock. And one of my goals is to go through all the schools that at least, you know, I get familiar with the buildings here because a lot's has changed in almost 20 years since I've lived here. This fall, Jim and I did go through the North Hudson School. Identified a couple of things. I've given Jim back some studies on possible savings on it. But do the walkthrough, do assessment. I ask a bunch of questions, almost drive somebody nuts going through this thing. I ask a lot of questions, get a lot of notes on it. Look at things that could be identified as energy savings. And then I provide an audit report back on some specific recommendations on energy conservation. And I also calculate estimated annual cost savings that, in this case, Jim and the board, you can take a look at and say what looks practical. The second sheet on that right-hand side was a study that I, cost savings I gave back to Jim just on the east gym. And that was about $3,500 that I estimated that changing the light source in that gym would save the district. Did the same thing on the west gym also. So from this, Jim can take a look at, see what looks practical, what doesn't look practical. And if it looks good, bring it to the board to make some decisions on some capital investment. When we walked through the North Hudson School, there's a gym there that has lighting that, you know, should be considered changing out. It's the same type of lighting that was in the two gyms here. There's still some steam in that building, and this might be a consideration down the road, changing in and out the hot water, which is a more efficient system. The, I can remember back when I lived here, being in the, what was then the junior high school down the Boiler Room, and that was all steam. And for instance, that's one thing, sometime between now and then, that was changed out to a hot water system. When we look at what the savings is, Focus on Energy provides incentives to the school district for making changes. And it's based upon how many thermes of natural gas, kilowatt-hours, and KW of electric that are saved. And if school districts got multiple projects going, there's also incentive on it. We gave three incentives this year, one for the EP Rock and two for the gyms here. Jim also mentioned the tune-ups that are being done. And we do give service buy-down incentives on that. And I think that's one thing, Jim, we need to look at, make sure that we are doing the paperwork and collecting all we can on that. Jim touched also on this benchmarking study that is getting completed. And I'm really looking forward to this. I think, from my standpoint, working with the school districts is going to give me some insight of where I need to put my efforts. Because if you find a school that, for some reason, is very high, that's an indication of an area or school I should be doing some work on and taking a look at. I feel that what I've seen of the district here, that things are being run very well. And I expect, even what Jim told you tonight, what's been done here, there's not going to be a large abundance of opportunities here. But we still need to take a look. But that's the first thing, I'm anxious to get that back for the school district here and see how these buildings compare to their peers. We also offer a retrocommissioning study program. This is a more in-depth thing than I'm capable of doing. And this can be done over an entire building or buildings or a specific area, if you want to look at a gym or gyms. And this would be done to bring the buildings up to their peak efficiency. It's done by a qualified HVAC contractor who is hired by the school district, and we give some input into this. And once that study's done, then Focus has an independent engineer take a look at it to make sure that agrees with some of the opinions, and that person also would come up with some of the possible savings. We provide a grant for that, a penny and a half a square foot. And the cost of doing this, as far as the total cost of district, would probably be somewhere in the two to three cent a square foot range. So we'd be paying half or more the cost of doing this. And this is something, particularly when they get this benchmarking back, I think it'd be a good opportunity to take a look and see if this should be done. Energy and Focus, Jim mentioned the training that we have. Jim attended the Building Operators Certification Program, was down La Crosse. Went down there one day a week, was eight months, right, you were down there? And I think they put, do an outstanding job on this. And unfortunately, right now, Jim is in the minority of the building grounds supervisors that's been taking advantage of this. And I think I need to commend that he did take part of this. We're coming up now with the BOC. It's called BOC II, which is a more advanced class on this. Also, to keep the certification, Jim needs to attend certain trainings. It's kind of like continuing education for your teachers. And I think when you look at your buildings and ground staff and the amount of value that's invested by the district into these, you know, it's imperative that the buildings and ground staff also get continuing education on this. We quarterly have a buildings and grounds workshop. It's held up in Rice Lake. It's different subjects. And we have one coming up on February 8th. Hope Jim can make it up there. We cover all sorts of different subjects. We bring outside vendors in to talk, and some of our people talk on certain expertises they have. And then we also have training on specific engineering or energy-saving measures. For instance, we've done some pool training for, both for school districts and hotels and others that have pools because they're a very high-energy user. And we're doing training on that. We have some training coming up now in Eau Claire in March on some basics of energy savings that we're trying to get some of our people to that have not had training to start thinking about it and how to come up with a plan. We also get involved in renewable energy. Wind generation is one thing, but it does not appear to be economical at this point in this part of the country. One possibility might be for a pool, is solar pool heating. But if this is something the district's interested in, we provide grants to help pay for the costs of the studies on that. The other side, on the left-hand side, I just put in some brochures that covers some more on Focus, may hit some of the points I missed. There's an example of what the Milton's Cross Plains School District did and some savings there. And also, Chippewa took a look at their computers. They had 1,150 computers in the district at that time. Found that they weren't shutting them off at night. Their IT folks put together a program to actually shut the machines down at 4:30 at night, which can be overwritten if somebody needs a computer. And they were realizing about $30,000 a year savings from doing that. So with that, I've covered what I planned to cover. If you have any questions or comments, I'd be glad to answer them.
I'm going to ask if anyone has questions or comments from Mr. Schwabz.
Yes, Madam Chair, just a brief question for Lee. Lee, on the example that we have here, the retrofitting and lighting for the east gym, what is the cost of that project?
What, the investment?
Yes.
I guess I'll have to ask Jim. I have the figure in the office, but I don't remember.
Okay.
I'm afraid I don't have it either.
Because I, excuse me, I was just...
The paybacks vary a little bit. But I would, between, if you do a study where you look at the reduced maintenance costs on it, because the lights you put in, the fresh lights, last longer. You have the advantage that the light output lasts much longer. I was really surprised when Jim and I walked through the east gym for the first time, and I carried a light meter, and the very ups and downs in light levels that are in there, it was terrible. And I can remember when this gym was brand-new and sitting up there watching basketball games, and I thought, gee whiz, you know? But in today's world, it was a pretty poor lighting system. So that's part of the payback on that. But when you put together, if you write down your investment with the incentive you receive from us, when you look at the lower energy costs and you look at the lower maintenance costs on it, typically, they'll run somewhere of four to six-year payback on them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ken?
Madam Chair, thank you for this information. It's very valuable. And I'm very pleased to see our school district moving in this direction. It sounds like not only do we create the energy savings and sort of environmentally friendly, but we also achieve some savings for the district as well. Do you have just sort of a sense of where, you know, our school district stands generally when it comes to energy efficiency? Are we sort of, you know, on the low end, high end? Have you had the time to sort of, you know, develop that kind of an evaluation?
No, I don't. That's one of the reasons I'm saying just for this benchmarking coming back.
Jim, excuse me, Jim, can you speak into the microphone so everyone can hear? Thank you.
Based on the article we received this week from Excel, from our Rapid Excel, using those national averages, I went back and compared our costs from the year that that article was published in. And we fell just below what the national average was. It was very close, but we were just under it by, I think, about $30,000 district-wide. So we're right there. We're right at the average, maybe, you know, 99th percentile of being average. So according to that document, which again was published a couple of years ago, and costs have gone up significantly since that, we were right at the average, just a little bit below. And I've got, my feeling is that's about where we're going to fall with this benchmarking study. You know, we've addressed, you know, we don't have any, now that Willow River has had a full remodeling, most of the really inefficient stuff has been taken care of. The boilers down in Willow were pretty bad, and there were some air handlers with some extremely old motors on them that probably should have gone to the antique shop after we removed them. But really, I think we're going to fall right, right where we need to be as far as being average. Now, there's room to improve there. I mean, we can be better than... I mean, we can be better than average. And that's why we're working with Lee and Focus on Energy to try to identify those areas. And then we need to make a decision as to whether the values there would actually make some of those changes, you know, looking at payback figures and costs of projects and things of that, that nature. So...
The work I've done here so far, I'm impressed. And you've got the advantage that you're a large enough district with, you know, with the number of schools, that you have somebody in Jim's position who is kind of overseeing. The school districts, I feel sorry for, are some of the single-building K-12s, where their head maintenance person also drives a school bus. And I've seen some examples there where the energy costs are very high. You know, I'd be complimentary to Jim, quite honestly, because when he and I did the audit of the North Hudson School this fall, we're up on the roof, and I asked him what this was, and he knew, and I asked him what that was, and that ventilators for that and that heating, you know, he knows his system. The other thing I was very impressed about, and I've not seen in another district, is every device has a number on it. So it's a motor, or air handler, or fan, or what have you, it all has a number on it. And I know you spotted, boiler room there, you saw one unit that didn't have a number on it. He was upset because there isn't a number on it. So you're doing tracking and knowing what's going on, and I find that very unusual. One of the things I need to get some information out to Jim on, because we've got, in the February it ends, we're given a special incentive for any savings for a reduction of outside air that's not needed in large-volume areas. So Torrey would be one, the gyms are another, and the commons would be another. And we're finding some schools that are bringing in much more outside air than what they need to, especially into the gyms, because there's cold you have to meet to. But, you know, you don't need to bring the air, the amount of outside air in during the day when you have 20 kids in there in a FIDE class that you do when there's 1,500 people in there for a basketball game. And so we came up with this incentive, and I need to get some information back to Jim. And, you know, you can take a look at, and if he can shut some of that down, we'll pay incentive of $0.30 a therm for doing that, so...
Any other comments or questions? If not, thank you very much for your work with the district. And Jim, I know I mentioned earlier this year, we had received notice of your certification, and we appreciate the time that you've given and the expertise that you give to the district in this area. Your staff has done a great job, and you've done a great job leading the staff. So thank you very much. And we'll look forward to more energy-saving ideas for the district. The next report that we have, Mr. Pep, would you introduce that, please?
Yes, not only are we fortunate to have Jim in the position that he is, we're also very fortunate to have Joan Allen in the position that she's at, and that's our child nutrition program. And she's here tonight to talk on our fresh fruit and vegetable pilot program. And before she starts, I would just like to point out, I think the only reason we got this grant, there's 25 schools. Now, I mean, we got seven schools just right here in Hudson, but there was 25 schools in the whole state of Wisconsin that received this. And they base it on, basically, our free and reduced, there's a lot of it. And it's due to Joan's program that she runs is one of the main reasons why we received it. And I would like to introduce Joan and have her talk about this program a little bit.
Thank you, Arnie. I appreciate the kind words very much. Good evening, everyone. It gives me great pleasure to announce to you tonight that Rock has been the recipient of the free fruit and vegetable program from USDA. And it is a completely free program that has been allotted to Rock. Some of the reasons that USDA has embarked on this free fruit and vegetable program is to encourage children to eat more fruits and vegetables in lieu of the crises that we are facing now with obesity. They have been very successful in the past in the states that it has been run in. Currently, we have 14 states that are now in the program. Eight states are permanent participants in the program, and six states, which were added this year, which Wisconsin is one of them, are on a one-year trial basis. When will the program begin? It will begin approximately the 1st of February. There's some work that, paperwork that is coming from USDA to the state of Wisconsin, and when that is in place, it will be funneled down to the schools. Just exactly what is this program? Rock's students, all of Rock's students, will be provided with free fruit and vegetable snacks during the school day. We have been talking and had decided that probably to start out, it would be best to have this snack in conjunction with their milk break. They're having a nutrition break now, and it would be logical to tap into that and have these available to them at that point. Right now, the kids are bringing snacks from home to eat with their milk break, and this would replace that. So we hope that we will see perhaps a better quality of snack being consumed during the school day. We're also inviting the staff to participate and to eat along with the kids in the classroom, because that's where they have their break. USDA thinks that if the students, the children, see the teachers eating and other staff members, it will be a good model for them, and they will be encouraged to participate with them. I can remember when I was in school, my teacher was a person that I looked up to. And I think USDA has a good idea in doing that. Another important component of this program is nutrition education. And the program was started in the year 2002 and 2003. And since then, we have had many companies and coalitions come forward and provide information to schools, lesson plans, posters, tabletop tents, bookmarks, just about anything you can think of in regard to fruits and vegetables. So these are all available to us in the district, and they're all on a CD, just ready to be downloaded as we see fit to use them. In the cafeteria, which we're concerned of, we're going to put posters up on the walls talking about the different fruits and vegetables and the benefits of eating them. We're going to perhaps do some spot announcements in the morning, announcing what's going to be the snack that day, and try to encourage the kids as much as we can. Also, coming down through the lunch line, we think that they will be talking about their snacks, what is it going to be today, and et cetera, et cetera. And we hope then to say a few words also to encourage them and find out how they're liking it. Some of the coalitions that are available to us is the Wisconsin Five-a-Day Coalition, the National Five-a-Day Program, and the Dole Five-a-Day Program. Well, how is this going to work? Well, the state is going to award us a fund and a grant, and then the schools can start drawing upon that grant. It has been suggested that we keep our invoices separate for this program, so we don't have any confusion with the school lunch program in paying the vendors. We'll send those invoices down to State Department, and they will refund or give the money back to the school system. We don't know for sure just exactly how much we're going to receive at this point. A lot depends upon the enrollments as they come back in from the different school districts. But in the past, the schools have been awarded about between $80 and $95 or $96 per student. So we're thinking that that will be sufficient in order to run this program, to have a snack each day. There cannot be any more than 10% administrative costs out of that grant. So most of the money will then will go directly to the kids. There's going to be some evaluations that are done. Before it starts, USDA will be doing a pre-survey with parental approval of the students at Rock. The fourth graders are the ones that are going to be selected to be evaluated. And I'm sure they're going to, I haven't seen the survey yet, but I'm sure they're going to ask questions about, what did you have to eat today, and how many fruits or how many vegetables, and what kind of things do you like? They're trying to establish a base to measure the successfulness of the program this year. Well, so the USDA will be measuring the three As, the awareness, what the kids know about fruit and vegetables, their attitude, their willingness to try new fruits and vegetables, the actual behavior of them, their consumption, how many actually are eating the fruits and vegetables. The first evaluation will begin as soon as we can, around the 1st of February. There'll be another one on May 6th, and then on January of '07. Why does the U.S. Department of Agriculture want to continue this program? Here are some key results from the first pilots beginning in the years 2002 and 2003. This is what they actually said to USDA back at the evaluations. Nearly everyone recognized some health benefit or value from the pilot. The school staff believed that the pilot lessened the risk of obesity, increased attention in class, reduced consumption of less healthy food, and reduced the number of unhealthy snacks brought from home. They think it increased the students' awareness and a preference for a variety of fruits and vegetables, particularly the less familiar kinds, because it isn't just getting the kids to eat carrots and dip, it's to expose them to different kinds of vegetables and fruits than maybe than what they've had before. Also, it's helped the children who would otherwise be hungry get more food, and it increases the students' consumption of fruits and vegetables at lunch. Some of the reasons that the children liked the pilot was they got to eat their favorite fruits and vegetables more often, and they actually liked the health benefits of eating these foods. It was a welcome break in classroom activity for them also. Doesn't that sound like kids? They found also in the upper grades that they could eat the fruits and vegetable snacks as a substitute for breakfast. We know at middle school and high school, maybe the kids come without perhaps eating a breakfast. And those schools that had that pilot program, the kids were substituting that for breakfast. Many students described the improvement in their eating habits, and they had a greater willingness to try fruits and vegetables, or at the very least, a greater consciousness about eating too much of what they call junk food. So I think it'll raise the awareness of the kids at the very least, which is what we want to do, and it works out very nicely in conjunction with the wellness program that we are working on in our school district. We see this program as an important catalyst for change in efforts to combat childhood obesity by helping children to learn more healthy eating habits. The fruit and vegetable program introduces schoolchildren to a variety of products that they might not have had the opportunity to sample before. I'd like to introduce at this time, Shar Krieger. She's the cook manager at Rock, and she will be spearheading this program. Shar has been with the district for 16 years, started out as a two-hour employee, and now is working as the head person at Rock. And this program is in very capable hands with her heading it out. Amy, do you have any questions or anything you'd like to add? Okay, okay. Do you have any questions? I know you had perhaps a lot of this information in your board packet. Were there any other questions that came to your mind?
Board Member Donovan.
Joan, thank you for your presentation, and also thank you for getting the, submitting the application and getting this grant for our district. One of the questions I had, I understood you to say that this is a one-year pilot?
Yes.
And in the material, I read that it had been a pilot, but now is a permanent program. So I was confused by that.
Yeah, it has been made a permanent program for those states that have been in it in previous years. But the last six states that were put on this year, it is just a temporary pilot for this year. However, they look at that as being something that will be continued on. And we have Mary Jo Tuckwell, who also has this program in Eau Claire, is on our legislative committee, and she's going to be lobbying in the farm bill to get this as a permanent addition for the last six states that were added.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had is, how will we be looking at or making some evaluations within our district beyond the program evaluations in terms of whether the costs of the program and how it might be maybe implemented in other schools within our district if it's determined to be successful?
We've done a little bit of that already. A couple of years ago at Top Prairie, we had our own little fruit and vegetable pilot program. And I worked closely with State Department in putting that together. What I did was, because we, in the elementary schools and the high schools, have always offered a variety of fruits and vegetables at lunchtime, not just the one fruit and the one vegetable that USDA requires, we offer a variety of them. And in fact, encourage the kids to come back and have unlimited servings if they want of that. State Department thought that it was fine if we just eliminated one of those components from the lunch and served it at another time during the day. And that was fairly successful for us. It was already in the budget, so that money was already in place for it. So I think if it continues to be a successful program at Rock, we probably should look at other schools if they so deem that they want to, particularly in lieu of the wellness program and also the state of the children with their obesity issues.
Thank you. Board Member Chernoway?
Mrs. Allen, I also think this is a great starting point for us. I have a question. I think an important component to this, as well as what do we do to educate the parents of these children, you know, so that, is there like materials that go home to the children?
Yes, yes, there is. There's going to be a parent component. I'm going to use the back of the menu, as I have in the past, to do that. And the program is so new to us at this point that we haven't received any additional information. But I have noticed in the calls that we've had that there is going to be a parent component. There's also going to be a component with the community that we're going to want to tap into as we can in establishing partnerships in the community, such as in the fall, we might go to an apple orchard and look at their produce and bring it in and have the kids sample, and do things like that to make it be more realistic for the children, because sometimes the kids don't know where some of this produce comes from. So we're going to try and do things like that. I'm a firm believer that we should be looking at daycare also. Kids come to school already with pretty well-formed habits on what they're going to eat. And if we looked at the whole scope of what children are eating from age two on, we could do a lot of good for our kids by getting them early and training them. And, you know, they wouldn't come then and not be liking broccoli. They would like broccoli, because I can attest to that. I have a daughter that went to River Falls, and she was the only one that asked for seconds on broccoli. Why? Because she had eaten it all the time at home. So it's no big secret, but it's something that we haven't put much work into before, and we need to do that.
Any other comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may. Again, Ms. Allen, I really want to thank you for pursuing this program. I certainly think it is going to be invaluable for helping our students, because certainly childhood obesity is really a growing issue, no pun intended. What I did want to ask, I'm just so curious, because I noticed in the criteria here, it mentions that the schools should be those with 50% or more of the children having eligibility for free and reduced. I can't imagine that we're close to that.
No, we're not. Rock was selected, it was the highest number, they have 12% free and reduced. But in the fine print, USDA allows for some flexibility, and they wanted to have kids from all economic backgrounds represented. So they were able to choose three schools that had less than 50% participation in the free and reduced program. So Hudson slid in that way with two other schools in the state.
Well, that's terrific. I'm guessing we had a lot of competition, and so my compliments to you for writing a great application apparently.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Joan, I just want to make sure all students in the school will be receiving this. You mentioned the fourth grade will be your focus group as far as feedback, but all students will be receiving that.
All of them.
Great, great. Thank you for your efforts to bring that to this one school, and hopefully, the other elementary schools will look at doing something like this in the future. So, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that, we will move on to item seven, correspondence. Is there any correspondence this evening?
Madam Chair, there is none.
Okay, we will move on to item eight then, topics for action. The first item is item eight, consent items, which consists of personnel and expenditures. And the expenditures this month are in the amount of $1,486,677.58. And you have the personnel items, of course, in your board pack.
Madam Chair, hearing no additions or corrections, I move that the Director of Fiscal Operations be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,486.67, $486.67.58, and that we also approve the consent items as presented.
Okay, do we have a second? Second. Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Wyatt and a second by Board Member Crimmens. Is there any discussion? Oh, excuse me, there's no discussion. With that, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Madam Chair, I would just like to point out primarily for the benefit of the public, because all the board members are aware that you just voted on it, but that action just approved the retirement request for Mr. Fett. So I'll make some additional comments under personnel, but I wanted to make sure we acknowledge that. Mr. Fett has 17 years of outstanding service with our district, and I did not want that action to go unnoted.
Thank you. And I'll save any comments for my last meeting in April to wish you well in your retirement. With that, we will move on to item B, fund balance designation. Board Member Chernowhy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As many of the board members are were, we did pass a policy last year regarding the school district's fund balance. And so the Finance Committee took this issue up at our recent meeting. And as you can imagine, we had some good discussion regarding this issue. First and foremost, I think it's important to note that there was consensus on the part of the committee that we do need to commit a portion of the fund balance as stated in the policy for the school district's operational or future capital expansion and improvement needs. So it really came down to what is that amount that we want to commit in a separate fund for those future or projects in the future. And we looked at, we tried to balance our desire to create this fund with some of the other considerations that were included in our policy. And I'll just mention a few of those rationales for maintaining a certain portion of funds in a reserve fund or a fund balance. And those include to address fluctuations in the timing of revenues and cash flow in accordance with sound accounting practices, to provide adequate working capital sufficient to meet the district's cash flow requirements, thus minimizing any short-term borrowing during the annual operation cycle, to function as a safeguard to fund unanticipated expenses that the district might incur, or to fund unrealized revenue which may occur but shall not be considered available to meet recurring operational expenses, to demonstrate fiscal responsibility as healthy reserve levels result in a high credit rating, which helps enhance the district's borrowing position, to accommodate for economic and growth uncertainty, to provide for unanticipated changes in tax and spending policies of state and federal governments, and the imposition of state and federal mandates. So given that list, I think it's understandable that it's not a terribly easy decision to decide how much to move into this category. Because in our school district, we are faced with a fair amount of uncertainty. And, you know, when we look at what's going on in Madison, while we're just looking at our own school district and the growing needs that we have, you know, looking at potential space issues that we have to deal with at some point in time. So given that and the policy, we decided that we had a range of somewhere between 3.5 million and 5.5 million that we decided would be somewhere in that range that we would be willing to designate for these future improvements. So given that range, we sort of came to consensus on four and a half million to use for this fund, keeping in mind that, you know, we have every hope and expectation to, you know, move additional dollars into that category into the future. So given that, I guess I'd open it up to other committee members to see if they had any other.
I would just comment that we did have considerable discussion. We spent about an hour and a half discussing the amount that we would agree upon to bring forth, because obviously, as Board Member Chernowhy mentioned, there are a lot of factors to consider. And the one thing that we all agreed upon was that this district has been fiscally responsible, and we did not want to do anything to jeopardize the future financial position of this district. And I think as board members, we've all shared that same thought, is that this district needs to stay financially healthy. And so when we talked about the difference amounts, we really looked at each of those items. We thought about what the legislature is doing, the needs of the district, as Dan mentioned. So after much discussion, we decided that 4.5 million was a figure that we could bring forth to the board comfortably.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to point out that Mr. Fett provided a handout for us today that is sort of a cash flow sheet that shows, you know, with that amount designated, how that affects our cash flow over roughly a 12 or 15-month period. And you can see that, you know, the one thing with our fund balance, it's not a consistent amount. It changes from month to month based on, you know, funds that we receive from the state and the federal government, as well as, you know, our expenses each month.
And I believe you mentioned, Board Member Chernowhy, that we felt it important that the board in the future continue to review this periodically and assess whether the board would be comfortable in adding more to the amount, or just to monitor that so that we maintain fiscal viability.
Madam Chair, I had also some comments I wanted to share, and I would concur with Mr. Chernowhy and Madam Chair, that we certainly did have lively discussion and lengthy discussion at the Finance Committee meeting. The number that we did arrive at was 4.5 million. One of the items that I shared with, or actually two items that I shared with the other two members of the Finance Committee, was that one of the things that I felt when I came to this board was one of the most incumbent things that we have is really our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. And to me, that meant I did not care to be a member of a board that would put us in a short-term borrowing situation. And the other thing was that this fund balance we have is not something that just happened overnight. This is a number of years of close and tight budgeting on the part of the school district over a 14, 15, 16-year period. And I did not, again, desire to be a member of a board that would begin to draw down significantly that fund balance that previous boards and board members have accumulated. So that was one point that I made to the committee. The second point that I shared, or second item, was an article out of Minneapolis Tribune dated the 16th of December 2005. And I'm just, I want to put it in the record just real quickly here. This is an article dealing with Hopkins School District, one of the western suburban districts west of Minneapolis. And I don't want to be lengthy here, but I want to point out here, Hopkins is a well-regarded district. But Hopkins Schools walked a financial tape route for six years. This year came the fall. The district Cadillac of Public School Districts amongst a lot of Chevys and Fords is in debt and running a deficit of $4.3 million, more than 5% of us annual budget. The cause of the district officials say was a combination of living paycheck to paycheck, a desire to win competition for students, and a $2 million budgeting error on the part of the business office. And I'll quote the superintendent, "We overspent the available resources provided by the state and the taxpayers of our school district. That is unacceptable, and we will need to change that." One other quick comment. The superintendent also said that since 1999, the Hopkins School District, when budget cuts began in earnest, the district began living dangerously, spending its rainy day reserve and its fund balance down to zero, putting the school district on the brink of falling into statutory operating debt. Now, I think that's an extreme example. We are certainly not anywhere near what has happened to Hopkins. But again, as one member of a seven-member board, we have that financial responsibility to the district. And we're not going to spend the fund balance foolishly. And I think that the $4.5 million amount that we're bringing to the full board from the Finance Committee is something I'm comfortable with. And when we're done with the discussion, I am certainly prepared to enter a motion this evening.
And I would ask for a motion, and then we will have discussion from other board members.
Okay, I will so do so, Madam Chair. I would make a motion that the Hudson School Board designate an amount of $4.5 million from our fund balance for future capital expansion or building improvements, with the one condition that the school board be allowed to review and modify this level of funding in the event of an emergency cash flow need.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Minnick and a second by Board Member Kaisershot. And at this time, I would ask for discussion or comments from anyone.
Well, Madam Chair, I guess I'll begin. First, I would like to thank my colleagues on the Finance Committee for making the recommendation, because I do think it is an important policy move for us to move some of these funds into an area designated for capital projects. We certainly can anticipate that with being a growing district, and I think it is a wise move. And I also want to commend the Finance Committee on coming up with what I think is a responsible figure. As you may recall from previous meetings, I did support the idea of designating some of our fund balance for capital projects, but I was a little uncomfortable with some of the early numbers, that being $6 million, which would have taken us pretty close. So I'm very happy that the committee has looked at that very closely and come up with what I think is a very responsible figure. So I wholeheartedly support this proposal.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I would certainly echo what Board Member Minnick and Board Member Kaisershot have said. I really do encourage us to undergo a regular review of this fund balance. I do think the environment's continuing to change. I think our growth is going to cause us to look at some options, both in classroom space and administrative office space. I think that the TIFF district will have an impact as that property comes onto the tax rolls. It will affect how the state funding impacts Hudson, and it's something we need to be aware of and planning for responsibly. And with Board Member Kaisershot, I was not comfortable with the initial proposal. I did not feel that that left us with the kind of cushion that we as a district need to have to be responsible caretakers and planners for this district. Listening to Mr. Stacecall's comments tonight about what's happened to gas prices and looking at my own utility bill tells us that we do need to have a regular, a better and solid cushion for those swings in expenses. And I feel very comfortable supporting a four and a half million dollar fund.
Any other comments?
Just that it's easy to identify the cost of, energy costs increasing. It's more difficult for us to identify the amount that other things go up because energy costs are increasing. And so I think that while I was comfortable with the 6 million, I'm comfortable with the four and a half million. And I think that it's very responsible on the part of our Finance Committee co-board members to recognize that it isn't just energy costs that's going up, but it's going to be a lot of costs that are going to be going up. And that having enough, in a fund balance to be able to accommodate that ebb and flow is going to be just increasingly important over the next couple of years until there's some stabilization in the economy.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, hearing none then. I would ask for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read by Board Member Minnick and seconded by Board Member Kaisershot, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Again, item 8C was taken off the agenda, so we will move to 8D, the 2006-2007 calendar. Mr. Benoit.
On page 176 is the proposed calendar for 2006-2007. This was the negotiated calendar with the Teachers Union and the Board of Education. This basically is a template of this year's calendar. There are a few changes. I can point a couple of those out. The start date next year would be the day after Labor Day for kids, that is, on September 5th. We would end then on June 7th. Most of the other breaks and days that you see in there are the same as what we had this year. You will not notice there are no late starts or early releases scheduled in there yet as there are. Parent-teacher conferences aren't on this calendar yet. We can, we will fill in those blanks a little bit later. We bring that back to you. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. I would ask for a motion, and then we can entertain those questions.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the school district calendar for 2006-2007 school year as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member Donovan and a second by Board Member Crimmens. And I would ask if there are any questions or any comments for Mr. Benoit at this time.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Benoit. Is the, I noticed that on our handout, by the way, it was very helpful to have the state rules on school days and hours of instruction attached with this. I found it extremely helpful to look at this. The state's very specific about the number of days and the number of hours based on education, or the grade of the students in question. It does say that a minimum of 180 days. Given what we're hearing about the ability of American students to compete with other countries educationally, most of whom have a longer school year, does the state, have there been conversations at the state level about changing the length of the school year or raising the minimum number of days and hours of instruction required?
Not like there have been discussions in Minnesota on that, or went a little bit further, but I think that's a topic that probably comes up time and time again. I'm not in a position to have any research to quote to you at this point in time, whether or not it is effective or isn't. But basically, we know what the law is now, and we try to follow that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? I would just ask, when would you anticipate that you would have the early release dates and the conferences, those types of things scheduled in?
I would think probably by the early part of March.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? I did realize as I was looking at it, I looked to when spring break was, and I thought it really doesn't matter, because I won't have a student in the district as of after June. So I don't have to look at the school calendar so much anymore. so I don't have to look at the school calendar so much anymore. With that, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Item 8E, CISA 11, the 2005-2006 shared services contract. Mary?
Madam President, Board Members, you have in front of you next year's shared services contract, and I want to just point out that the services for this year that we've used are marked and those that we have paid for. Thanks to our directors, Nancy Sweet specifically, and Sandy Kovac, who have gone through this and really analyzed this, to really ask the question, do we need to continue these services? Are we getting the bang for the buck here? There are a few services that we will no longer be using in the same manner. Obviously, we can add them, we can confer and consult with CISA 11 if we would need to do that in the future in the areas that we will no longer contract for services. But these purchased services, we've looked over, and even on the second page, on page 178, Nancy Sweet has indicated for our ELL population that we only would use this with the qualifier that if we would be eligible for direct funding with ESCA funds as opposed to having to join a consortium. And there are some limitations when we cannot use those funds directly in our district because of the size of our population, the size of our funds, so you have to join a consortium and cannot spend them here. So we are only qualifying that that would be used if we would be able to use those funds directly here. So I would move this forward and ask for your approval of this contract at this time for these shared services.
And I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve the contract with CISA for the upcoming 2006-2007 year.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion by Board Member Wyatt and a second by Board Member Kaisershot? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. The last item then, under topics for action, is 8F, appointment of the deputy clerk, and Mary, I would ask you to explain that.
We are in the process, as you know, of preparing for the April 4th school board election. That process has now begun, and as we work through the procedure that we need to put in place, we need to appoint a deputy clerk, and I would recommend to the board that Arnie Fetts serve as the deputy clerk for the district for this election.
Okay, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll so move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Minnick and a second by Board Member Crimmens. Are there any comments or are there any questions for Mary? Okay, we do have someone from the audience who would like to speak to that, Mr. Hermson. Would you please?
I vote for him.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, with that then, I would ask if, for the vote then, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero, and Mr. Fetts will be our deputy clerk. Thank you. Next item is topics for discussion. We just have one, and this is an item that we've brought back from our last meeting, and that is the WASB delegate assembly proposal and resolution consideration. Board Member Minnick, do you have any comments?
I'll, I'll lead the discussion on that, since I was so willingly volunteering to be the delegate to the assembly.
Volunteering or volunteering?
Thank you, other board members, for that wonderful opportunity. So having qualified that, I'll lead the discussion. My intent this evening is not to make any recommendations, but to listen and see what actions on the part of the school board they would desire that I take to the Assembly in Milwaukee. And I believe the, if, if I can summarize very quickly some of the last discussion at the last board meeting, I think it centered a lot around pre-retirement, retirement and the study that the Menominee School District had done. And then I know there was some discussion earlier this evening prior to the meeting amongst one, at least one other board member, on how applicable the Menominee study was to Hudson in terms of our funding of the, of the retirement fund. So anyway, having said that, I, I will certainly lead the discussion and, and take direction from the board, if the board so deems, in the form of a motion or motions to take to the Assembly.
I would ask board members if you have any comments on any of the resolutions. We know that there are just five that will be going forward to the delegate assembly at this time. The others will be brought forth if the districts that had proposed them originally choose to bring them forth during the Assembly. Board Member Donovan, did you have a comment?
Well, yes, I have lots of notes, but then there were a number of comments that I made last month, and I guess the most important one that I would reiterate tonight is that I would like to, while, while I think it's appropriate for us to give Mr. Minnick some direction, I would very much also like us to empower him to listen to the discussion and then make his vote that's consistent with our direction. I think that if we give him a specific motion to vote on, that that may not actually be the, the resolution that is the final resolution that'll be presented to the delegate. So I think that I absolutely trust your judgment, that you understand and will understand our positions. The one area that I mentioned last time that I feel strongly about that I'd like to ask for you, Mr. Minnick, and then also other board members' direction on is that I very much would like to request that you consider opposing the bylaw change that would make the WASB regions consistent with the CISA regions. And I think that that, the rationale for that opposition is really outlined on page 333 from our packet last time.
And I know we also heard, or at least I did, I heard from our WASB president to also encourage boards to vote against that. I had a comment on the boundary appeal board decisions. I had some questions as it related to the transportation. It indicates there is legislation pending to allow school districts to provide this transportation with the permission of the resident school board, and I guess my questions would be, are there going to be any limits on how far a district would have to transport a student, and, you know, what is that going to do to in transportation costs for districts as far as increasing them?
Also at the, the WASB regional meeting was a presentation made by the Menominee School Board that dealt with the four aspects of retirement funding, and WASB chose at this time, in their correspondence anyway, to not take that issue into their, into their resolutions book. And I would encourage Board Member Minnick, should conversation come up on that, to support, in fact, bringing those resolutions into the WASB board pack. They may not be perfect solutions, but the resolutions are indications of the need to work on certain areas, and I think those, those proposals on the part of the Menominee Board are very well researched, they're very thoughtfully written, they're well documented, and they address areas of substantive need statewide. Perhaps Hudson is in a better position relative to those issues, but statewide, that is, those are issues that we will have to face, that will have an enormous impact on our system's ability to deliver a quality education at a responsible, well-managed financial cost. So I would, I would really, as a one board member, I would really encourage this board to support those resolutions and to direct Board Member Minnick to voice that approval.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members?
Madam Chair, just a comment regarding the prohibition of performance-enhancing drugs. As I read that, I, I note that it states that the use of performance-enhancing drugs is not at this time covered under the WIAA rules and regulations, and it would seem to me that that would be something that we would be supportive of in terms of prohibiting performance-enhancing drugs in, in state athletics.
Except that I have some trouble with the wording, in that I support the idea, clearly, but when we talk about performance-enhancing methods, which should also be prohibited, that needs to be more clear, because practice is a performance-enhancing method. And so there really has to be language in here that identifies what they mean by method. It's, it's not anything, any method that would, we would use to enhance performance. It's a method that we would use to artificially enhance performance. And, and I don't, I think that wording has to be challenged.
Nevertheless, I think the thrust of this resolution is something that we could support.
And the resolution does say that methods as defined by the Olympic Movement Anti-Doping Code. So there is some further definition that's just not here, but your point about that particular word is well taken.
And perhaps they'll bring forth that wording, because I'm sure there are other board members from other districts that have questions along that same line. I would certainly support the revenue, revenue limit and the QEO alignment, and that is something that districts have talked about for years, the fact that they are not aligned and the need for that, so I would support that.
Strongly support it.
I would strongly support it, yes.
I would strongly support it.
Yes, we have talked about that, and I know it's an issue with a lot of districts across the state.
Well, I, I look forward to it. It'll obviously be my first time to be a delegate or member of the Assembly, and it'll be, be an interesting process, particularly the geographic location of the state we come from, and I think, what are we, the 29th or 30th largest school district in Wisconsin, but on the other hand, certainly not of the magnitude of Milwaukee, Madison, Green Bay, et cetera. So I look forward to it, and I think it'll be, be a nice opportunity.
Thank you. And I would just ask that if board members do have additional comments on any of the resolutions, that you would just call Board Member Minnick or get those comments to him before the convention next week. Thank you. With that, we will move to item 10, Board Committee Advisory Council Reports. The first is Personnel Committee, and Board Member Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, a very significant action for this district was taken earlier with the acceptance of the retirement of Mr. Arnie Fetts at the end of this particular contract period, so June 30th. One of the other things that the Personnel Committee did here was a report from Mr. Benoit as it relates to the staffing process that the administration will be using, very, very similar to a process that's been used in the past and that's served us exceptionally well. The administration spends many, many hours in all levels of administration and getting input from each of our buildings and all of our areas, and the process that has been used will culminate in a recommendation that will come back to the board in approximately April for a recommendation for staffing for the next school year. One other interesting item of note that the Personnel Committee reviewed, and we will have more information by February 1st. February 1st is the date when, by contract, our teachers will be letting us know if they intend to retire. And we currently have 38 teachers who are eligible to retire. Now, that of course does not mean that 38 teachers will be retiring, but we do have potential for some significant turnover within the next few years within the district. We have a very experienced, high-quality staff, and, and also some high-quality, outstanding young teachers that have been hired in recent years. But those numbers are numbers that we'll continue to hear about and we'll continue to see, I'm sure, new faces in the district in the future.
Thank you. The next is the Communications Committee Meeting Update. Board Member Crimmens.
Well, two things. The first is that we will be implementing an internal electronic newsletter to get information out to employees of the district, announcements, those kinds of things. We anticipate, we, we would like it to, to begin going out as quickly as possible. It won't have a great deal of formatting at first, but it will be a continuous improvement project, and we anticipate development and improvement along the way, so we're looking forward to that and forward to feedback from employees about the kinds of things they'd like to get information about and the, the quality of that and, and the quality of the information that they get from that. And so that's one important action of the committee. The other one is that we will be working through our communications specialist, who's Melissa Winter, to clean up the website, make sure that all of the links are working properly and that things that are supposed to be there are there. Again, the website will be a continuous improvement project, and we hope that there will be great utility to it as it develops, but the very first step in that is just making sure that everything that is there is up and working, and that the information that we say is available on the web is really available and that the site is navigable. So those are the two things that the committee has made decisions about this.
Okay, thank you. The next, the Finance Committee Meeting Update. Board Member Turnerhoy.
Madam Chair, the Finance Committee met the other day, and a bulk of our time was spent discussing the fund balance designation, which, which we've already covered this evening. We also did recognize Mr. Fetts for his years of service, and he's been a vital part not only of the Finance Committee, but of the financial operations of this district, and we thanked him for his many years of service. We also received the auditor's report, and hopefully the board members have received this report as well. We're going to be meeting with the auditors at our next meeting next month, and then the auditors will also be coming to the board meeting to address the board as well as respond to any questions that board members may have regarding the report. I would just point out a couple of things regarding the report. There's a management letter that's included, so I'd encourage you to review that. And then there's also in, in the audited financial statements and supplementary information report, there's a section on financial highlights, and that's, that's a piece that has some, some good bits of information. One thing that I will point out is that, that caught my eye, is that the district's general obligation long-term debt, this is, this is for the audited period of '04 and '05, decreased by $2 million, which is always good, the more debt we can retire over time. And for the most part, I didn't see anything that, you know, pointed out any serious problems or weaknesses with our financial statements or financial condition or our, our internal operations, so, and I think any, anything that they have pointed out in the past or in these reports that we've pretty much taken seriously and addressed. The only other item that I think was discussed at the meeting, we, we briefly talked about a review of our telephone, internal telephone systems, and many of those systems have become outdated. We're, we're meeting with a, I guess, have we met with a vendor or consultant that has come to us with some recommendations? Members of the Finance Committee received a copy of this executive summary that we'll review in the next few weeks, and then we'll be meeting again soon to talk about what we need to do in that area and possibly come back to the board with a recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I could have a question of Board Member Turnerhoy. You mentioned that our debt had gone down for the period You mentioned that our debt had gone down for the period under review. Was that as a result of the refinancing that the board and through the community referendum achieved?
Arnie, that was just our normal principal on interest payments.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item 11, Superintendent's Report on Upcoming Events or District Highlights.
Madam President, the upcoming election on April 4th, we are definitely looking forward to. We have six school board candidates, and we thank those candidates for their interest in our school district and also their dedication to wanting to serve on our Board of Education. We have, as we look toward that April 4th election, we want the candidates to be very knowledgeable about the district and the decisions that the board will be making in the future. So we've put together some ways for them to get additional information. The district administrators and I will be meeting with those candidates, the non-incumbent candidates, on January 24th to share information about the district and each of our roles. And then we will, we are also currently providing the board meeting materials to the candidates prior to the election, so that they can receive those materials, as you do, and read them in advance, and hopefully, this will help them, will also be available to them for any questions that they have along the way. We have done, have gone through one of the first steps in preparing for that election, and that is to draw names for the order that the candidates will appear on the ballot. And so completing that process, I can announce the order of the candidates. The first, and I will say their names as they've asked them to appear on the ballot. The first person will be Priscilla Wyatt, the second will be Tom Holland, followed by Brian P. Bell, followed by James Baker, then Tracy Habish-Aleen, and then David W. Hadlich. So that's the way the ballot will read on April 4th, and we're looking forward to that election and working through that process and helping them learn more about our district.
Mary? I think board members are very aware of how those names are determined, but it might be useful for the public to just share how those names are determined.
Certainly. And you're talking about the order of those names?
The order on the ballot, yes, thank you.
What we do is we go through a process where we have a number of people involved. My secretary, Lena Ammon, has prepared slips of paper with each of the names on, on those slips of paper. They were folded and put in a container, and then Arnie's secretary drew those names out, actually looking in the other direction, had no idea which name she was pulling out, and there were two witnesses who were watching that process, as well as myself. Arnie was in attendance too, and this was the order that the, the candidates' names were drawn.
Thank you.
So thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then open enrollment.
The open enrollment period for the 2006, 2007 school year starts February 6th through the 24th, and as we look forward to that period, I just wanted to share some information about open enrollment. I know there's, sometimes there's concern that we accept students when we have schools that are either at capacity or nearing capacity, and so I wanted to just clarify some things about open enrollment and give you some information about that. We currently have 27 students from other districts coming into our district and attending schools in Hudson, and then we have 29 students of our students attending other districts. And for each of those students, the resident district, so for the students from Hudson that go out, we pay the other district essentially $5,745, that's kind of an estimate, but very close, for each of those students. So we receive funding for the students who are coming in, and we pay for students who are going out. It's to our advantage, obviously, to have more students coming in, and we're very close with that. We only have two additional students going out, and we have some restrictions when we accept students. We are required to accept them if we have space, and in certain of our schools, we do have space. We have a policy that guides our decisions about open enrollment, and 27 students into this district are essentially in certain places and for essentially two reasons in Hudson. We have, of those 27 students, 15 are at the elementary level, and 10 of those are at Holton, because we do have space at that school. Other students are because they have started in our school district, probably moved in most cases, and actually asked to continue in the school district. So they have been here before and continued in the school district. At the middle school, we have currently seven students who are at the middle school, and once again, in most cases, this is, again, they are continuing their enrollment in our district. And at the high school, there are five students who have, once again, been in the district and continued in the Hudson School District. If there's any questions that the board has about open enrollment, I would be happy to entertain those.
I would just ask that, and I know you'll bring back a report once we get those applications, so we can see the numbers as they come in, and also students from our district who might be applying to attend elsewhere. So, thank you. The next item, item 12. We did not receive any requests from citizens to speak, so we will go to, and so then there's no need for item 13. Item 14, Board Forum, there is nothing listed, and so that brings us to item 15. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Board Member Donovan and a second by Board Member Wyatt. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero, and I'd like to thank the public who was here this evening for attending.